There you go.
That's Mike's new, new technical voice, too.
Yeah.
I hear him all the time. All right, I guess we'll start this meeting. Israel, I guess I've never met you in person, but I hear you want to be our moderator.
Yeah, I'm guessing, I'm guessing I got the job because everybody else you asked said no, huh?
That's the size of it. Would you like to introduce yourself to everybody that's on board tonight?
Yeah, I think I know most people on board, but I'm Izzy Provantia. I've been in town, I'm a seventh generation Vermont'er, but I'm, I'm a Westsider. I'm from Nehaven and I've been here, I've been here for six years. I'm the treasurer of the Historical Society. I'm on the Planning Commission. I'm helping with, I'm a teacher down at Hartford High School and I'm helping with planning the 150th of Tombridge Fair, so I've been around. I teach social studies. I teach, I actually do mock town meetings in my class, no, no less, so.
How do they go?
They go pretty good, you know, it's, you know, as well as can be, you know.
Do, just a question, do kids even know what town meeting is before you do the mock town meetings?
Most of them don't. No, that's, that's one of my objectives is, you know, kind of, you know, I'm a, I'm a romantic when it comes to town meeting, you know. I'm, I'm one of those people who believes it should be capitalized and, you know, as in the T and the M. And so I feel like that's one of my goals is to teach that. I teach a Vermont class, Vermont history class, so. So I feel very obligated to teach the kids that and familiarize with them at least.
Yeah, well, I learned elementary procedure in FFA in high school, so I learned something in high school. See, I do such a professional job now.
So Izzy, Izzy, tell us about the 27th foot.
Oh, yeah, I really, I just realized that. That's a, I'm also historical reenactor and so I've, I founded two reenacting organizations, which are a British 27th foot. And I apparently never changed my name, so.
Where were they out of?
Uh, the original unit? Northern Ireland, into Skilling, so right on, right on the border of Northern Ireland and Southern Ireland, so, yeah. So I'm a historical reenactor as well, so.
And they fought in the revolution?
Yep, they actually, they're one of only six British regiments to fight in all three American wars. So they're Fort Ty in 58, 59, they were in Boston, New York, and then Philadelphia in 75 through 77, and they were at Plattsburgh in 1814. So, which is pretty neat. That's one of the reasons why we picked them, because they have, they have local provenance. Full of useless information.
Well, it's very useful. All right. Guess, has anybody got any questions about the town report?
All right, this is Kay. I missed the very beginning. Izzy is a candidate for town clerk, uh, yeah, for moderator, rather.
The, the, yes, the single candidate, yes.
Uh, do we know if Liz York also is going to be a candidate?
No, Liz declined. She's, um.
Going to be out of town.
Yeah, I forget where. She told me where, but Liz doesn't want to do it or can't do it this year.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, just gossip wise, she's having a girls weekend somewhere, but I can't remember where.
Nobody ever invites me to one of them.
For a good reason.
Gary and Mike and Mariah, you might know, but, and Izzy probably too, but when, when you elect a moderator at town meeting, I was just looking at our, you know, our elected officials, are you moderator then for every special town meeting over the ensuing year?
I think it's till the next town meeting.
Yes, it's a term of one year, John.
Okay. So that's what you're in for, Izzy.
If I had a choice to steal something or to pay for it, I would.
Elijah, you're unmuted.
I just realized that. That's awesome. My kids are playing like a game about learning to.
What was supposed to be?
Awesome. I'm so glad that's recorded. Cool, cool. I'm gonna mute now.
All right, any more questions or comments? It's gotta be somebody.
Are you, are you planning to go through each article individually, or do you want the questions and comments all in one go? What's your preference?
Tonight, you mean?
Right, I just, I'm, I haven't had the privilege of coming to pre-town because they usually align with Royalton's select board meetings. So I just wasn't sure how you guys usually do it.
I guess just throw something out there.
Yeah, as I remember it. But go ahead with the first question, Victoria.
Um, so when it comes to the general fund, I was noticing that the Select Board's Administrative Assistant and the Town Clerk did not reflect a wage increase for this fiscal year. And I was just curious as to why that is when the cost of living increase was 6% in January.
Well firstly, I have to say for myself, we budgeted a long time ago. It seems like years ago, and so I don't, I don't have a good answer to that question other than Mariah's still on the trial period.
Oh, yeah, right. I can, um, so Victoria, the, what we ended up doing because, because I'm taking maternity leave and I'm gonna take two months off from work, we increased what my salary would be by the, the COLA increase, but then we subtracted out two months worth of pay. And that's why it's a decrease because I'm, since I'm taking time off, they felt, or somehow it, it came about that because I'm not going to be there for a 12-month period, I'll be there for a 10-month period, that it, it decreased the total cost. Okay, and is someone covering your assistant duties in that time as well? Yep, yep, I have an assistant, so the assistant budget was increased. And then for the Administrative Assistant, if the Select Board, or if the Town Clerk takes over those duties, it, it hasn't increased just because it's kind of a set cost, if that answers your question. Yes, okay. Um, and then I think my only other, as far as wages is concerned, is that it's a little bit difficult to compare because I understand that the Highway Department has overtime rate included in their wages. Um, but I'm just noticing that in this year's proposed budget, the treasurer has only a COLA increase, and that was true last year as well. But it appears that the Highway Department is also receiving a merit-based wage in addition to their COLA, and it was noted in the town report that they recently received a wage increase. Does the board know when the last time the treasurer received a merit-based wage increase?
Couple of years ago, huh?
Yeah, a year, two, three, I, I don't know.
Okay.
It's been a little while, but it hasn't been forever.
Okay.
We can ask.
Yeah, Becky would know for sure.
Okay, um, and then I guess my only other comment as far as the warning is concerned is for the election of town officers, the position of town agent actually was eliminated in 2020 by Act 84 of the legislature. So that should not be on the warning.
Cool.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for that. Makes us look foolish.
Don't worry, Royalton barely caught it down there, too. It, it happened mid-pandemic, so everybody gets a pass.
I'll take my best. All right, anybody else? Anyone else?
Yes, this is Kay again.
Yeah, Kay.
I'm interested in town demographics, so I don't necessarily agree that not publishing births and deaths affects privacy because all those announcements have been shared widely in print, electronic media, social media, et cetera. Can we be given some statistics at the town meeting? If not, the names, at least how many babies were born, how many people?
Yep, I printed all of that off. I have the whole sheet for you. I have births, deaths, who was brought here for burials, marriages, all of that information for you.
So we will all get a, a copy of it next week?
Yeah, I, I have enough, so whoever wants it, and I can certainly make more. I knew that there was gonna be a group of you that were interested in it, so I can hand it to you at town meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mariah, that's not something we could put on the website?
Uh, I mean, we can. Again, I, I was kind of just keeping it out because not, maybe not everybody wants everybody else to know that their baby was born on this certain day or that type of thing. You know, some people still don't put that online. So just for the sake of privacy, I, I wasn't going to, but I, I do have it all, like, every year I have all of the information collected. So anybody who came in and asked, I would be able to quickly pull it for them.
Offhand, do you remember how many births and deaths there were? It seemed like there were so many people who died last year.
There was a lot more deaths than there were births, certainly. But I can't, I, I can't think of a number offhand.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Is there a list of how many people moved to town, Mariah?
Um, there's not. That could be something that probably the listers would be able to generate, and they'd be able to tell you if it was like primary or secondary homes as well.
Right, might be interesting.
Right, any more, any other comments, questions?
Um, I did notice, I was looking over the warning again today, and I didn't catch if it's not approved or voted on for you to appoint a treasurer and a moderator, I forgot to add Becky because she is also up this term, so we would have to just add in at the beginning of the meeting to elect a treasurer if we, if we needed to elect versus appoint.
Yeah.
We, we'd do that after the Article 9, right?
Article 9, is that?
We'd do a select board, town clerk, then the treasurer.
Yep.
Is that a three-year term?
Yes.
And Mariah, would it be three years if they're appointed to?
If they're appointed, it can just be for the duration of the, there doesn't have to be a cutoff. It's just until Becky decides to quit or.
That could be a one-year thing, right?
It's open-ended.
Or.
It's open-ended. It's like, it's like hiring somebody, you know, you don't, you can just hire them for a certain duration.
Yep. And then if the town, for whatever reason, decided to have one appointed and one elected, then Article 10 would follow suit?
Yes.
I hadn't thought of that.
Did we get an MOU from Becky as far as what the treasurer would do?
I sent her a draft of mine and I told her she could edit it accordingly, but I'm not sure if she has forwarded that to you or not, or if she's completed it.
And do you know, do we have a date when that appointment would happen? Beginning of the fiscal year, or could it be anytime?
Uh, I think it can be anytime. I don't think it has to start at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Or, or maybe it's when, when does your term officially end at town meeting?
Yeah, town meeting day.
Okay.
Sure, we wouldn't want to appoint her till September or something.
Can I ask, um, because appointing the treasurer and the town clerk requires a charter change, do you have to wait for your charter to be approved before you can appoint? And the research that I did, I didn't see that it required a charter change when I was looking at how to transfer that over. Uh, the only thing that I saw on the Secretary of State's website was that it had to be approved by the vote, the voters at like a town meeting. Um, but I didn't see that it had to have a charter change unless it was stated in our original charter that you could only elect a clerk. So I'll, I'll look into that, Victoria. Yeah, and I only ask because I know when, when Royalton went from an elected treasurer to an appointed treasurer, they did have to change the charter. But I'm not sure if that's consistent across the board or if it was a special case. Okay, I'll look into that.
Yeah, it's funny, at the legislature, we're constantly voting on charter changes. But they're usually much bigger things, not, you know, whether you change from elected town clerk to appointed town clerk.
All right, anybody else?
Mariah, if BLCT doesn't know, then Tucker, what's his name, Tucker Anderson, I think at the Legislative Council does all the municipal laws statutes, so he would.
Okay.
Pretty quiet group.
Here's a quiet group.
Any other business questions from who's on the call?
I want to sound critical, but I suggest that this meeting be hyped in the future.
You what?
Hyped.
Hyped.
Well, usually we get at, at a regular, uh, one, a meeting when you can actually, what am I trying to say, in-person meeting, uh, there's usually 25. So I was hoping it'd be 25 tonight, but I only count three, four, five, six people, other than the people that are supposed to be here.
I guess, this is, Gary, this is Brenda.
Yeah, Brenda.
I'm gonna be handing out all kinds of hand sanitizer, I think, for anybody who comes to meetings like this. Did you guys hear, did you guys hear about the hand sanitizer?
Yeah, Rodney told me.
Yeah. Yeah, the pallet turned out to be the size of a Volkswagen.
A hand sanitizer?
Whole pallet.
Really?
I had to leave a truck outside.
Yeah, we thought, Mariah and I thought when they changed it to, from little pumps to gallons that would probably be 10 gallons, but it sounds like we got delivered 200 gallons of hand sanitizer.
Yeah.
By the Vermont National Guard.
Can you, can you use it as a tip dip or something? Could Gary use it?
Is it in 55-gallon drums? What, what, what's the container?
Oh, they're gallon jugs. We gotta find a place to store this stuff. So it's sort of a little, it's kind of funny. And it was free.
200-gallon jugs?
200 gallons of hand sanitizer from Bar's Hill, Bar Hill.
Whoa, that's expensive, too.
Hey, is, um, town meeting gonna be accessible via Zoom?
Um, Mariah was gonna try it maybe, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'll get ahold of Bob Gray and see if he has the, like, if the Wi-Fi will reach into the polling arena. And if it does, I'll definitely try to set it up, but no, no promises.
Yeah, and then Izzy would have to sort of, or somebody, right, if somebody put up their little yellow Zoom hand, we'll have to pay attention.
Well, I think, didn't you say, Mariah, that if you zoomed in, all you could do was listen?
I think so, because there's not really a way to check people off the, like, the voter checklist if people keep popping on and off. And there's really no way, you know, to verify that they are townspeople type of thing for them to, in order to vote. Uh, they're certainly welcome to listen or ask a question, um, but there wouldn't be, obviously, they wouldn't be able to, like, dispute a vote.
Because I might just have a nice smiling picture and not really do them.
Yeah. Could be an imposter. That may not be Brenda Field there, who knows?
That could be.
Sounds like it. Um. I don't know. Like I said, I haven't.
Any errors or omissions noted by anybody?
I haven't looked through it. Real tight yet.
Somebody, you, you don't have me as green-up coordinator, which was really a, a shot to my ego.
That's what I thought, that we had appointed you that, and I see you weren't in there.
So how did Greenup go as long as we're talking about that?
Uh, there were a lot of promises to clean up. I, probably 80% of the roads, I did not see that many green bags come in. But, um, they, maybe they came in in different days.
That could be.
Yeah, because I saw somewhere the week before somebody had gone out. I guess it was down on Route 12. And I guess that's when they had time to do it or something.
I'm gonna pencil you in.
Or replace me, you know, either way. No, that, well, the Conservation Commission is supporting and we're happy to keep doing it. In fact, we're like putting it in our work plan that we're working on, so it's fine.
Do towns still have truant officers? Maybe Victoria knows.
I don't actually know the answer to that one, um, because any truancy complaints in Royalton go through the police department.
That same in Tombridge, I think. I want, we should track that down, Mariah, just for next year.
Okay, I will look into it.
We, do we not have animal control officer?
We don't, and at this point, we don't have any constables either, so we need to drum up some constables and an animal control officer.
But the animal control officer is appointed?
I believe so. I don't have it right in front of me right now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it in the town report.
Yeah. Um, I had a suggestion from a citizen that, and I don't know if it's working on, but maybe contact the game warden. Maybe the game warden has some sort of training to be an animal control officer. So.
I think game one, probably did his hands fall.
Well, maybe not. Um, anyway, I just thought I might throw that at.
Okay.
And do we know what, as far as elected town officers go, besides the constables, what other positions are open at the moment, just because people resigned or quit or moved away or whatever?
The, the only other one is the recycling coordinator, which I know that we kind of like. Kathy Tarami's the godmother of it, but she's not technically in the position.
You'd like her to be, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as I know. Anything else?
Everybody else that's current. Is Thomas still a representative, though, to South Rutherford Rescue?
No, and you actually have three of those. It's, um, Brenda Fields, Bob Spawnable, and David Kimball are your reps to South Rutherford Rescue.
Yeah, we just reappointed David last, last week. We should have known that.
It makes me think that Brenda on here is probably not the real Brenda.
Oh, it's your animal control officer, John.
The game warden, take care of that.
Oh.
And then, how much have we, uh, yeah, it sounded like there was some confusion on, on the lunch is gonna be done, as far as we know, by the rec department, right?
They're gonna, they're gonna, as people check in, they're gonna take orders for whatever, uh, a hamburger or.
French fries.
French fries or, oh, chicken, chicken.
Chicken finger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
And then they'll have macaroni salad and a drink for $10.
Yeah, and then at noon time or where thereabouts, they'll bring it down from the rest.
Slap it on the table.
Yeah.
So the, but the Tombridge Central School Library or Friends of the Library are doing a pie sale? Because I know Elaine Howe asked Emily to make a apple pie. So I was.
I thought it was just, I thought it was just the library. I didn't think it was the school.
Oh, maybe it's the Tombridge Library, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So there'll be a pie sale. We should advertise that. And then.
Going out to the world right now.
Now that we've got Kay on here, we should ask her if, if they're gaping holes in preparation for the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah, I seem to be the only library person here. Starting at nine, we're going to have free stuff in the driveway behind the library. Uh, the friends are going to be selling whole pies, and they're going to have some really great raffles. And that will be at the beginning, before the meeting starts and during the meeting, people can, I imagine they'll be set up in the back like they were last year.
That sounds great. Okay, what, what about the, from, I, I know you're somewhat emeritus now, but, um, what about the Memorial Day Parade while we've got you on?
I have been collecting a lot of information from different people. I will do the wrap-up press release for the Herald and other, uh, media. It's, the calendar listings are out. We're having a town hall service, the parade, the cemetery, Hoyt Memorial Park service, the chicken wrecked with ice cream and cow pie bingo. Library will be selling all in stuff from the driveway if anything was left from this Saturday. And the library will be also doing bake sale in the town hall basement like it used to do. We are not doing a traditional plant sale because of the concern about the jumper worms.
Oh.
So the only way the library at the present is talking about having any plants that they want to donate ones that they have planted in medium or bought in a medium. Like if you buy too many flats of tomato plants or something, those kinds of donations they'll take, but we're not asking people to dig and divide and donate.
Yeah. That sounds good. Well, I know on, on behalf of the Select Board, we thank you for your years of, of service of lining up our parade.
Nope, I have little to do with the parade. It's still Tracy.
Yeah, but you, you've done a lot for it, Kay.
Well, the PR post mostly. So you're welcome.
Well, this will be a first, too, because last year, right, it was July 4th weekend, so this is, we're having kind of two big weekends in a row in Tombridge. Mariah, did we never hear back from? Orange County?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that.
About the speed sign?
No, the sheriff. Went for appropriations.
I thought we had heard back from the sheriffs. I thought it was the.
Oh, there is, yeah, the special investigative unit.
Yeah, and we didn't, but we said that we would leave it on the warning because last year somebody stood up and talked about it and that if we decided at town meeting to not vote on it, that was fine, but.
Okay.
Did we hear anything about the speed sign?
No, not yet, but I'm gonna follow up tomorrow.
Should we reach out this week to? The Sheriff's Department and just suggest they have somebody at the meeting who could speak to that appropriation?
Sure, is it, does it have to do with the Sheriff's Department? Last year I thought it was somebody. Else.
Dave Agum spoke, I think, last year, but he's no longer with the Sheriff's Department. Um, I was thinking about speed limits or speed, the indicator signs that tell you your speed as your speed through town. Um, Lori and I went cruising around last weekend and went up to Derby and camp and came home and um. I don't know how many of those in different towns that I saw that they were just hooked to a, to a speed limit sign or to a telephone pole or something. They, they looked like they were um, 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 solar powered. And you could hook them fairly securely, so no one stole it. But I, I thought that something like that would be really slick to have, then we could potentially move it from spot to spot or something, if it didn't cost too much.
Yeah, I can look into that and see if we can buy one.
Because it is an eye opener when you're going forty-five and you shouldn't be going thirty-five or something and it flashes at you.
Like to keep it out of West Tunbridge, so. Just keep it over on the side of the hill.
Yeah. Your concern for Betsy?
Yes.
All right, as we keep thumbing through the town report.
Are, are we gonna have people get up and say? Anything about the appropriations or are the reports enough? We'll do it, do it by request.
Yeah, the reports are pretty good. I mean, if you wanna read about them, you can get all the information you need.
Have we got a report from everyone?
I think all but that one. All right, anybody else? Got any questions? I mean. We've pretty much got it all set that the town meeting is gonna be down at the fairgrounds in the polling arena. And um. I forget who, somebody's gonna bring the P A system, maybe someone.
Yeah. Yeah, the school's gonna bring it.
Yeah, so that's all set. Um, is the school or someone gonna set up chairs or the fair?
Uh, I talked to Bob Gray. He's got chairs down there. He's giving us three tables, an extension cord, uh, trash cans and some composting bins for the food. Um, I'll talk to him about the internet and see if I can, if that's something I can get on. Um, and I'm probably gonna go down, I'm going down an hour before it starts, so if the chairs aren't up, I have a couple people with me that can help put chairs up. Um, in the center, but. Yeah, I think it's pretty well squared away.
If the chair's not up, wake him up.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Izzy, I, I don't know how appropriate would be, but. When somebody gets up to ask a question, it'd be great if, you know, you could remind them to state their name. And, and even something like what road they live on would be great, just because there are always people who, you know, we've never seen before and just to sort of place them like, where do you live in Tunbridge? Doesn't have to be super specific, but just. Just something about them would be nice.
Sure. Um, I, I do have a couple questions for you guys in terms of logistics. If we're at that phase.
Sure.
Is it okay to ask those questions?
Yeah.
So in terms of obviously, the, the state of Vermont says it's okay for the moderator to like, so would, would you start the meetings, a select board member start the meeting? And or nominate, nominate a moderator?
Usually, town clerk does that.
Town clerk?
Yeah, so.
So you'll.
Yeah, I'll open it up with, uh, the pledge of allegiance and then I'll say that the floor is open, uh, for nominations for moderator. And then somebody will say, Izzy Prabancha, and then we'll be like, yeah.
There we are, say who?
Yeah. And then, uh, then it's all, all yours.
Okay, and then just another question, I was just looking, looking through and says that. That basically if there's a challenged, if it's a challenged position for select board lister auditor, then that has to go to ballot. Is that correct?
Well. I, I believe so, yeah. So I have, um. I have index cards I will hand out and I'll have pens and stuff, so it's gonna be that type of ballot. I will have a ballot box down there and people can, uh, then submit it and then the B C A would count them.
Okay, well, cuz from what I understand and what I've, I haven't missed a town meeting yet since we've been here, and usually those positions aren't challenged. And so usually what happened, and, and also it's okay to not, you don't have to go to ballot if it's on an unchallenged position.
Right.
Correct.
So, so, but I'm just, I'm just clarifying that procedural thing. In.
Isn't there a rule that five people or something like that have to stand and ask for a paper ballot?
It's seven, but that's, that is, that is specific to a motion, not, not an election of officers.
Oh.
So. So, and I just wanted to clear, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
And then as far as like, Izzy, if you say I, I would entertain a motion to, you know, have the clerk. Cast one ballot for so and so, do we wanna be that formal?
Well, that's, that's, that's up to you guys. I mean. You know.
It's common, that's what you could use to do. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, I was planning on it, but I'm, you know, obviously, I'm not gonna look you square in the eye and tell you that, you know, I wrote, I wrote Robert's rules, but I'm. Fairly familiar with it and trying to make sure I'm pretty familiar with it, so I just wanna, I wanna make sure that we're doing, you, I'm doing what. Has traditionally been done and, and is getting the job done, so that's, that's, that's why I'm asking. So.
Uh, this is Kay again. I'd like to make one suggestion, since all the articles are read at the beginning of the meeting. Last year it seemed a little tedious when they were all so read as each article came up again for discussion. Right, I don't think that's required probably the second reading.
Yeah, so Izzy, you could read them at the beginning?
Yeah. So, yeah, okay, cuz I would reread it anyways, just to clarify the motion in order for it to be.
Yeah, but when you get into that one with all the budgets, I mean, that's.
Yeah, Article eight, you mean?
Do what you think is best.
Yeah, no, like I said, I'm, I'm here, I'm, I'm listening more than I'm speaking in that sense, like I. But I mean, usually what you do is you, you repeat the motion before the, before the vote. So.
Repeating the motion is different from reading the entire article again, I guess is the point.
Okay. I guess that's all my questions.
All right, thank you. Um, I guess usually. The, whoever asks if anybody out there in our, in our field of seven people or whatever are running for any particular office, and if so, they could state it now. They don't have to. Is there anyone out there running for any particular office?
I mean, I'd like to be reelected, yeah. I'm, I'm running for town clerk.
Okay, thank you.
Have you got buttons or anything we can wear?
Lawn signs.
Oh, no, I don't. I wish I did. I don't know if you'd wear one though, Mike, you'd. Ask for one, then you would never wear it.
Ari, are you running again?
Ends on the day and the hour. Um, I probably will.
You don't leave me?
No, that's, I hate to leave Mike and John up in the air. I enjoy the good company. And I, I do enjoy the position. I just seem to have a lot of stuff going on, but everybody has a lot of stuff going on. What's another three years?
And that might be another thing, Izzy, is. If somebody is running, just, just to encourage them to tell, tell us something about themselves.
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, the more we can make it sort of community friendly and, and accessible, the better, just so I think people get to know who, who lives in Tunbridge.
Yeah, there are always people at town meeting that I don't know because they've moved into town in the last year or two or something. And it's even better when some, for those people, if I am nominated to, to hear me speak and then they can know whether they wanna vote for me or not.
I do, I do have one more question. In regards to Article nine, I'm a little confused to allow the select board to appoint the offices of treasurer and town clerk. That, is that, that is separate from electing a town clerk?
Yes.
Yes, um, we've always elected them. Um, in the past, and, and we were thinking that we might wanna appoint them. Um, because the jobs are getting so, um, technical now. Um. I guess is the main reason.
Yeah, we just wanna have it be a popularity contest and then find out that the popular person that wins the election doesn't really know what they're doing. Because especially treasurer, there's so much to that now, it's just mind boggling. So we, we weren't trying to have any power grab by the select board. We just wanted to protect the town. We're totally happy with Becky and, and Mariah doing their jobs.
Well, I don't know.
Well, I am. Um, so we're not trying to kick them out by any means.
Right, so that article is specific to, to, to allow the select word that power.
Yeah, and if the article goes down, then we elect them.
Right, okay. I was gonna say, I thought it was, that's not some trick to just to force Mariah to be town clerk, you know?
Yeah, forever and ever. Um, but that, but then in the next article, Article ten, it does state electing a treasurer and a, well, it doesn't, we need to add. Amend that because if it's not approved for the select board to appoint us, then the following article, we'd have to get elected. So I'm assuming if we're appointed in Article nine, you can just nix those two positions as elected.
Okay, so if, if Article nine is approved, then we, we can, we can avoid the town clerk in the.
Town clerk and the treasures.
But if it goes down, if it goes down in flames, then we'll, we'll have to add, add treasure.
Yes.
Of reelection, okay, good.
Mariah, you said before the, just when Izzy's getting going and, and maybe reading over the, the warning that we have to make an amendment, right?
I don't, again, that could be, if, if there's a specific way to do it with Robert's rule that Izzy knows that I don't. I just assumed at the beginning of it, we could make an amendment to the, to the town, uh, warning, but. If, if there's a better, more appropriate way to do it, that's fine. I just was thinking we should, you know, mention it before obviously. We try to vote, elect Becky.
And that's in regards to the position of treasurer that's not on there?
Correct, if it needs to be elected, then it needs to be.
Right, I mean, would it be safe to assume that Article nine will pass?
No.
Who knows, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know if an article can be amended? You know, at town meeting?
Yes, it can.
It can, so maybe that's the way to go is to say on Article nine, to allow the select board to appoint the offices of treasurer and town clerk. And, you know, something about if it doesn't happen to elect them as is customary.
Yeah.
And then that would flow into Article ten.
Right, and the only thing I'm, you know, I would, you mean, obviously you can amend any article you want. I would assume that would apply to elected officials as well. But since it's not been properly warned, but. I can, I can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, I know it must happen with budgets where all of a sudden you have to change, you know, math, there was a math. Problem and.
You are?
Fifty-seven cents gets added to an article, but. We could, we could come up with language to make Article nine work with Article ten, right? And I guess we would. We could move that, you can make a motion about that.
Me?
No, I mean, say the select board, say you read Article nine, what it is, and we said, you know. We, we explain ourselves and we could say we, we move that. Article nine be amended to read. This, we have a vote on it and then, then we could proceed with the discussion on the article.
Either that or would you just point amend Article ten to include, if need be, the treasurer?
Either way, yeah.
Yeah. I would probably go with the latter and just amend Article ten.
Yeah, cuz if, if you, if Article nine passes, then you don't have to worry about that.
Right.
Although we're still not sure if there needs to be a charter change.
Right.
Oh, Victoria commented and said that, um. That she was, that I had, was correct and that no charter change needed unless there was a charter that already existed regarding that, which there's not for Tunbridge.
We don't have to leave that out, is it?
Yeah.
I was trying to.
Oh.
So on Article ten, we could just amend it to say. Elect treasurer for a term of three years and town clerk for a term of three years.
Yeah, I definitely, I think I'm already on there, so I think it's just the treasurer.
Right, just treasurer. So that. I mean, for the, most likely then that Article ten will have to be somewhat tweaked to make sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
And also we found out we don't. Um, elect the town agent, so.
Right.
That. If you're gonna amend, amend something.
We could do it then.
You know, you'd have to pull that to. Say, you know, you're mending if to delete that position.
All right, Eliza, how's your game coming along?
Uh, it's good. I've taught my kid all the character he needs for the rest of his life. He's answered all the questions correctly, will not steal.
Wow.
Intermittently, he lands on a space where we're supposed to give each other hugs, and so he comes over while I'm listening to you give me a hug.
Would he be interested in running for an office?
He could be the constable now. He's ready. He's five, but he's ready.
He's a good boy.
Mariah, do we have, do we have numbers, um, for Article eleven?
What is Article eleven?
The surplus.
Yeah, we do.
Should have somewhere.
I don't know what the numbers are, but.
No, we do have a number.
Yeah.
I can ask Becky for the numbers and you can.
It's in, uh.
Oh, right.
Select board report. Surpluses. Um.
Pretty sure.
138, 111.61 in the general fund and 156, 180.5 in the highway fund. So, yes.
So we're proposing a 50% split, right?
Um.
From the general?
Yes, yes, we're going to put half of it in the town grad fund and half the towards taxes. Right?
Thank you, right?
For the general fund.
Yeah.
Which was 138, 111.61.
And then can we describe what happened, where the highway fund surplus went to, to the voters?
Um, we can if we want.
We could.
Um, and that, um.
Did we plow it back into three different funds?
Yes, we did. And I guess we didn't, um.
I don't remember which funds off.
We said highway fund will be rolled back into just says things like the paving fund or disaster preparedness fund. But we, we split it three ways, I can't remember what the third.
Mariah, could you get Becky to?
Yeah, I can.
Well, Mariah should be able to find it in the minutes, because.
Yeah, I'll have it in the minutes as well, but I can have Becky get you.
Blacktop and the disaster fund and one other thing.
I don't know, this is bridges or something like that, I don't know.
Can't remember now.
One time ago. Um, the, directly following the town meeting, the school meeting is going to happen and I guess it was last week when Kathy Galuso was on our select board meeting Zoom. She encouraged people to stay from the town meeting to the school meeting.
And moderator could bring that up to to encourage them to stay. Well, the school board meeting, they're going to hold me, Paul.
Yes.
And the moderator for the school meeting was?
Uh, somebody on the school board or.
Yeah, somebody from Chelsea, I think.
Chelsea, yeah.
What's his name, the new state's attorney there? His name escapes me.
I know it, when, when you say it, I'll know it.
Is it Dixon Corbett?
That's it.
That's it.
Wow.
Good job, Mariah.
Good, mine like a beetle trap.
We'll get it written on our hand.
Yeah.
And so is it, is it, um, I guess because it's a two-town district, right, they can have a, a moderator from Chelsea?
Yeah.
I think.
Yes.
Like, do we have to have a moderator from Tunbridge, like if Izzy lived in Hartford, could we have him be moderator?
I think we could. If, if you know, if they were, if the school board was on board with it. You know, Izzy could do the town meeting and then go into the school board meeting.
Or a school. I was just wondering about residency.
Well, I don't think it makes any difference in the
For moderator.
In the school board because you've got two towns involved.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter if they were from Tunbridge or Chelsea.
Right. Do we know if specific things will come up during other business?
I haven't heard of anything.
Yeah, I haven't heard of anything.
All right, John, is it good to be out of the legislature?
Yes. And where's the town nurse?
It's on page seven.
I know as an article.
Yeah.
It's in our budget, right?
Just, just in the budget, not an article, yes.
Yeah, it wasn't an article. It's in the budget and it's explained on page seven. Where is it in the budget?
I don't remember where it is in the budget, probably general fund.
A little bit safety?
Maybe.
Town nurse, right there.
Look at that.
Wow.
You're pretty sure.
What page is it on?
It's on page 12.
I see it.
General fund, way down to the bottom.
Well, it's going to be interesting under highway expenses, how, how well we budgeted for fuel, for instance, this year. I know we budgeted more, because we thought it might go up, but we didn't budget as much as we might have.
We didn't budget as much as we should have.
Right.
We're going to be stealing money from everywhere to cover that.
Yeah. But Rodney's trying, because you, you mentioned Mike that he was going to try to use less chloride this year, so I mean.
No, I'm not saying anything against him.
No, no, but I just think we would have a budget for 20,000 if we could cut that in half, for instance, that would go a long way toward paying for fuel.
That's correct.
So I, I think, I guess my point was that everybody's trying to help out, so.
People then steal signs, we could save some money there.
Oh, gosh. That's an ongoing problem, especially in the western part of town.
Yes, it is. But we didn't see, we didn't bump our heating oil month.
Right.
That's going to come back and bite us.
That is.
That's going to come back and bite us.
We can hope for mild weather.
Who knew?
Well, if it was a big problem, we could we could amend the, the surplus destinations too, if you wanted to.
That's true.
Yeah, because we didn't, the town hall.
It didn't burn much.
We, we didn't, yeah, because it wasn't used, we didn't bump that up very much.
I wonder if like Irving oil, who'd buy fuel from and heating oil from? Um, if they have records so that they could say, well, last year and the year before you burned X amount of gallons.
Oh, yes, they do.
And, and then we could just do the math really easily, comparing what fuel cost last year and what it costs now and we can figure out what we're going to fairly closely what we're going to use.
Yeah.
For, for dollars.
And we're going to do that, why?
Just for the heck of it, just so we know.
Okay.
Mariah's going to do it, not me.
Oh.
If she wants to. If she wants to.
All I've ever wanted to do was.
Not woke her up.
Stuff.
Yeah, anything.
Well, the administrative assistant is going to do it. But it will happen to fall during the two months that the administrative assistant is.
Yeah, so that means John. John will call.
All right, we're coming up on a, yeah.
Rudy, can you think of anything? You're still there, Rudy?
Rudy's not talking to us.
Yes.
Can't hear.
He's busy sitting next to a river.
Nothing, nothing really.
How about Eileen who comes to every meeting and never says anything?
Her thing's on Button Hill.
No, I don't have anything, I'm just listening, just spying.
Is that a different waterfall than Rudy has?
No, oh yeah, it's different.
Oh, yeah, you've got a nicer waterfall than Rudy does.
That's because mine's from the internet and it's not my photo.
Button Hill too, Rudy lives on Park Hill, that's a little better, better part of town. It leads to West Tunbridge, you know?
It leads, all roads lead to West Tunbridge.
Well, Eliza, Eliza probably has a West Tunbridge waterfall behind her.
No comment.
No comment.
Uh, no waterfall pictures here, but we have one. I'll have to get a picture, I'll update my Zoom account. It's really small though, we're up high, you know?
I think that's it.
We've gone over an hour now and silent. So I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
All in favor of adjourned the meeting, please say aye.
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 Well, it's good to see you few folks.
Thank, thank you for joining us.
Yep.
You have to push stop recording here, right?
Oh.
Thank you all, and we'll see you Saturday.
Yeah, in person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Imagine that.
Let's pause, let's stop.
Are you sure you want to stop recording? Yes, then we are.